First of all, I want to thank you for being so patient with the board. We're just waiting on Mrs. Peyton. At this time, I would like to call the January sixteenth, two thousand twenty meeting to order at six thirty-six. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
At this time, the chair is seeking a motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda with one addition. I'd like to add to that the agenda that the best counsel to share with us the procedure when the committee is to be met or to meet. And it's not, I'd like for counsel to do that, but I'd like to move that to the end of the meeting for that discussion. But I would like to make that amendment.
And we also have the Cerner update.
So I also move with that amendment to the agenda.
All right, so we're bending two discussion items to the end of the agenda. The committee meeting and the update with Cerner. Okay. Vice President Reagan.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Director Abrams.
Aye.
Director Watchery.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries to accept the agenda. At this time, we are moving on to audience comments. Are there any comments? I don't have any forums. All right. Applause, applause.
Good evening, directors.
Good evening.
This evening, we are recognizing students from two schools, and we are starting with Frida Markley Early Childhood Center. Pre-K student Omarion Brooks is being recognized for demonstrating strong academic skills and great character. Out of eleven pre-K academic standards. All right. Out of eleven pre-K academic standards, he is above grade level on eight standards and at grade level on the other three. He is also a great helper. He is always willing to volunteer during his choice time to help classmates with academic skills that he has already mastered. He shows true compassion and kindness for all students and teachers. He is described as polite and respectful. He is a true classroom leader in all aspects. Congratulations, Omarion.
Director Graves showed that he is a Brooks.
And I am going to ask his proud principal, Dr. Osborne, to come forward along with his teacher and his mom if she would like to come as well. Okay. Tonight, we are also recognizing the Lego League team from Irvin Elementary. And I'm going to ask them to come forward, and we have a picture of them on the screen, and I'll scroll a little once we get going here. The members of the team are Darian Elias, Saif Alsal, Ian Cossey, Dynasty Wilson, Aleah Jefferson, and Alex Mondain. This fifth-grade team came together and dove right into the work as a collaborative team, even though they may not have previously known each other. Coaches say it was amazing to watch friendships blossom, along with the collaborative work required of these high-level tasks. This group of students had to build a robot that could accomplish several different missions. This team selected the most difficult mission to accomplish. As a result, the coaches report that the team scored the highest points of any other team they have coached in Hickman Mills. In addition, the students use what they learned through the mission and use the STEM to make their own YouTube blog. Congratulations, team. And I'm again going to ask their principal, Ms. Blancardi, to come forward, as well as their coaches. I've invited moms to come who may decline the offer for the photo and ask Dr. Cargill and President Brooks as well.
All right, congratulations, young scholars and principals and parents and teachers. All right, moving on to the approval of the December nineteenth, two thousand nineteen regular session minutes. Board of Education, have you had a chance to review the minutes from December nineteenth, two thousand nineteen?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, if there's no changes to the minutes, I'm seeking a motion to adopt the minutes.
Director Chairman, I ask that we, I make a motion that we adopt the minutes.
I second.
Discussion. Director Graves.
Aye.
Director Abrams.
Aye.
Director Watchery.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Vice President Reagan.
Aye.
President Briggs.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven to zero. All right, moving on to executive updates. Dr. Cargill.
Yes. Good evening, board and members of the community. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce you to Mr. Attorney Garrett Christensen, who has joined the district through a partnership with Link and the school district through Legal Aid. So he's our new attorney that's providing free legal services to parents, as well as staff members who meet guidelines. But I won't tell his whole story. I'll allow him to approach the podium at this time. If you help me welcome Attorney Garrett Christensen, and he'll talk about himself, as well as the services that he'll be providing to families. And I think he already has a list of people that he's supporting already, so I'll let him speak. Help me welcome him at this time.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you for the directors for this opportunity to speak with you. As Dr. Cargill said, my name is Garrett Christensen. I'm the attorney for the Hickman Mills Justice and the Schools Project. I'm a Kansas City native, graduated Raytown High School. After graduation, I came back and taught in the Kansas City Public School District for three years. During that time, I loved teaching, but I also saw the need for another type of advocacy beyond the classroom. So I went up to Minnesota for law school, became involved with organizations like the Children's Law Center and Mid-Minnesota Legal Aid. After graduation, I clerked for a district court judge. For me, I feel really fortunate to be able to return home and pursue my passion, working with organizations like Link, Legal Aid, and Hickman Mills, whose visions really align with my values. I'd like to share a little bit more about who Legal Aid is and what we do. Legal Aid began in nineteen sixty-four. We cover forty counties here in western Missouri, offices in Kansas City, of course, as well as St. Joe, Joplin, and Warrensburg. The overarching mission of Legal Aid is to provide free legal services to the most vulnerable citizens in our communities. We do that in a number of ways. We have a housing unit that focuses on eviction defense. We can also help with public and subsidized housing issues. We have a domestic violence unit focusing on domestic violence prevention, primarily through representation of survivors of abuse. We can help with things like orders for protection, divorce, child support, and child custody issues. We can help with guardianships as well, when someone like a relative or a grandparent needs to establish a legal relationship to be able to help with health care and education. We also have a consumer protection unit that focuses on people in situations of predatory lending. So if someone has issues with a payday loan, or a car title, or other unfair debt collection practices. I should add, we do have teams that also focus on things like immigration, foreclosure, taxes. So it's a really broad range of civil issues that Legal Aid is able to help with. And the neat thing about this project is that I'm sort of a satellite for Legal Aid available to any district families. To give you a sense of Legal Aid in action, I'd like to tell you about one of our former clients. Ava is a single mother. She has one daughter named Becky who has developmental disabilities. Because of those disabilities, she attends special education classes at her local school. Last year, Ava had a medical emergency, and she fell behind on her rent. So her landlord sued her for rent and possession, essentially to evict her. Ava immediately contacted Legal Aid and shared that her biggest concern was her daughter potentially being uprooted from her school, as well as the impacts of having an eviction on her record. She also shared that she was working on a payment agreement with the property management. And so her Legal Aid attorney immediately contacted the landlord's attorney, and they worked out an agreement where Ava would pay a thousand dollars by a certain date, and about a hundred and eighty-five dollars a month until she was caught up on the back rent. Unfortunately, Ava didn't have the thousand dollars, so her Legal Aid attorney also helped connect her to the Community Action Agency and a local church, who was able to fund her that money. And so with some of this legwork in place, the parties came together. Ava paid the thousand dollars. She signed a promissory note to pay the amount she owed, and she recertified her lease. All this happened before the court date, and so her landlord dismissed the case. And so what we saw was Ava was able to stay in her home, Becky was able to stay in her school, and we were able to keep an eviction off of Ava's record. And so Ava's story is really emblematic of what we're hoping to do with this project. As I mentioned, the numerous areas that we can assist with. But primarily, we are focused on the student mobility crisis. And we know that with each eviction, students lose approximately three weeks of class time. We also know that the district's doing great things with family engagement, community engagement, as well as in the schools. So we know that if we can keep kids in the Hickman Mills School District, that they'll soar. We also know with the beginning of any new project like this, that community trust and community awareness is a significant piece. And so I appreciate the opportunity to speak with all of you. I know all of you have extensive ties to the community. And so I hope that I can be an asset in any way to you or any district families to help this project succeed. So I'll be around after the meeting or take any questions you might have now, but I don't want to take up too much of your time. So again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
I'd like to welcome you to the position that you're holding, I think, with the demography of our district and all, and the mobility rate of our young folks in meeting because of evictions. Certainly welcome you, and I've already talked to someone about you, and you come with some good talent credentials, but also a good heart and dedication, as you always articulate to what you're all about. And it takes a special person to work for Legal Aid and public defenders, because you don't make a lot of money. So there must be a commitment to do this. So I congratulate you and thank you so much.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I also want to thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Christensen. And I might add, real quickly, I am super, super, super excited that we are able to offer these services to our families, as well as staff. Just super excited about the services we have at the nine thousand old Center Face site, and looking forward to expanding services for our families. So I just had to say that, you know, as I think about it, I'm always saying it takes a village to raise a child. This is a true village at its best, serving children to create better outcomes for children and families. Super excited for the partnership.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Skinner, enrollment.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you will look, and we're comparing December of last year to December of this year, we do see that we are down in enrollment, where we were a little over two hundred students. And you start looking at our proportional attendance rate, we are down a little bit, at one point four percent where we were last year. It is something that, again, every school is working on as we speak. If you look, we have had some positives, and again, some of the things that continue as a pattern is our kindergarten attendance is up five point five percent. So again, maybe moving the kindergarteners to the elementary school had a positive effect in this way, because it has been something that's continued to occur, as well as the high school, which, you know, has always been a struggle with us, is continuing to be up. So if you look, ninth through twelfth grade is up. And as we look through all the schools individually, and let me kind of scroll down through here. Takes a minute when I'm scrolling through. You can see all the green, you see some of the red, but I wanted to stop on this one again, Truman. Every time, I'm going to show both them, green all the way across the board. And again, you can't really count the sixth-grade red, because they didn't have anybody there this year, and that's why that's red. But everything else is green. And then, of course, when you go back, what we were just talking about with Ruskin, all green as well. So we continue to work on this effort. Right now, the school attendance teams and the school principals are working on submitting mini-grants to United Way. They're due next Tuesday, the twenty-first. So by the next time we meet next month, I'll be able to tell you who got the mini-grants, and a little bit about what they're going to do with that grant money to affect attendance for the remainder of the school year. Any questions?
I got one.
Okay, Vice President Reagan.
Since you have had these, because I know you do several things, what is some of the feedback that you have been given by rewarding kids and doing those drawings? How is that feedback?
Well, there really, you know, there are some of the schools that are doing some targeted attendance with the fifteen to thirty students or so, and they do have some people that have donated gift cards, and they're working with that. That's positive. But we're also looking at some of the gift cards, really trying to get the parents involved in getting the gift cards, because we know, especially at the elementary level, it's the parents that, you know, really get the children there on time. But we're really looking at doing things that affect more than just the gift cards, and that's what these grants are about. Each grant can be up to a thousand dollars. I'll give you an example. One of the grants that I read right now, Ms. Corn is here, and I kind of looked at hers briefly, because she's kind of sent it to me. You know, they're talking about getting together an area where the students can gather, I believe it's at lunch, that they can go and purchase different things, items, food items, and so forth, with this grant money, you know, to reward students for being there. So different ideas are going to be coming from different teams. And again, United Way is going to get together with Attendance Works and evaluate those grants and award them by the end of the month. But I will tell you, one of the positive things as well, that's come probably even a little bit more than the cards, we have, you know, teachers, FSLs, and teachers themselves writing letters to parents and the students. And that's become very effective, letting them, again, know that they are missed if they're not there, and they care about them, and they want them there every day. So it's a variety of different avenues, if you will, for what different schools are doing. But again, just letting them know, but bottom line, it's more than just being absent. It's more than just having makeup work. It's the fact that you're missing out on a great experience while you're not at school.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Skinner.
Next item, seven point three, two thousand nineteen APR update. And while Mrs. Rowe approaches the podium, I'd like to add that this is an update that we've shared through the Educational Accountability Committee. But we wanted to take the opportunity to present to the entire board and provide updates in terms of our status and the supports that are being provided to students to move the district. I'd ask the members who attended the Monday's Educational Accountability Committee, chime in when you can in terms of providing clarity for your board colleagues in terms of the supports, and any questions that may arise around curriculum resources and PD that's offered to staff, as you heard the extensive report from Ms. Franklin on Monday during the Educational Accountability Committee. And so you know, the more help that we have in sharing the message and getting this information out in terms of curriculum resources, training that's provided to staff, it really helps to get that message out. We are making this a priority in the district to continue to improve student performance. At this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Katie Rowe. Thank you.
Good evening, board. Thank you for the introduction, Dr. Cargill. This evening, I prepared four handouts for you. They're the four handouts that I shared during the educational accountability meeting. They're in the orange folder in front of you. The first handout that you'll find in there is a two thousand nineteen MAP and EOC district summary document, which is also up on the screen. So this will show you grade-by-grade percentage and number of students who are scoring in each level on the MAP and the EOC. You'll see several grade levels where there are green, meaning there was an increase from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen. I'd also like to point out and note that there are no two thousand seventeen scores. Typically, as you know, we do a three-year trend. However, two thousand seventeen was a totally different set of standards and a totally different test. So we would not compare those as recommended by Desi. In order for you to have a quick glance at all of the categories that are on the APR, I did go ahead and add at the bottom of the document I did go ahead and add at the bottom of the document, you will also see our college and career readiness standards. There are three under MSIP 5. And I added attendance and then our four-year grad rate. You'll see that under college and career readiness, two of the three categories, we went up from 2018 to 2019. So, the college assessments, post-secondary assessments category, and then percentage of students earning a qualifying score in AP dual-credit IRCs, et cetera, those two both went up. Attendance is slightly down from 81.1 to 79.9, and then the four-year grad rate is up from 86.6 to 89.4. The second document that you have in front of you, I'm going to pull it up here. The second document that you have in front of you is what is called the DESI Summary This would typically be where we would see a summary of our points earned as a district. As you know, DESI changed the format of the APR reports this year to not show any points. The goal behind that was to help districts better understand the data underneath of the points. With multiple changes in the point system over the last three years, it becomes difficult to compare those. However, there are a few things that I do want to point out. This document will tell us how we're progressing towards the state's targets that they have set. So, that's the most important thing that we're looking at. It's measured in three ways. So, on this left-hand column, this is called the growth column. So, this measures individual students who are with us from year to year and how are they doing? The middle column is called the status column, so that takes where we at as a three-year average. And then, the third column is called the progress column. So, how are we as a district improving or not from year over year? As you look through the document, it's a lot to digest. There are a few highlights that I wanted to point out. So, in terms of breaking down the categories, two important items of note is that in both math and science, we are on the floor currently with our status. So, you'll see that 227.2 for math, which is almost to the yellow, and then 255.5, this was the first year of a brand-new test in science, so even lower in that one. So, those two categories, we are on the floor in terms of meeting the state target. We are approaching in three targets. So, we are approaching in ELA, so that's right above, this 257.9, so we're approaching the target, we're in yellow. And then, if you flip your pages over, you'll also see that under college and career readiness, on the first standard, you'll see that we're approaching there. And then, the last place that we're approaching will be one more page over, and it's attendance. We have one category that shows that we are on track, and that category is the four-year graduation rate. So, you can see right here in green, 86.1% on track with meeting what the state's targets are. And then, we are meeting the target or meeting the expectation in the other two, these other two college and career readiness standards. So, we've got a little bit of work to do on those. And overall, we're pleased with where we're at in many of the categories, but know that we still have a significant amount of work to do, particularly in the areas of math, science, and ELA. The third document in your packet that you have is what is called the Supporting Data Supporting Data Report digs even further into each of the five categories for MSIP, and it'll show us what is our MPI from year over year. So, remember, that's calculated based on student score in Proficient, Advanced, Basic, Low, Basic. It also shows us what is our trend in terms of proficient or advanced. A couple of things that I would highlight on this document would be that you'll see that in math, we did see an increase from 2018 to 2019 as a district, so from 15% to 17.4% in math. Two of the college and career readiness standards, so if you flip over a couple of pages, scroll, college and career readiness, again, you'll see two categories, these first two. So, from 38.9 to 40.8, and then our AP and dual credit from 44.9 to 68.7%. And then, the last category that you would see the increase in is, as we've talked about multiple times, is graduation. But this, this report is probably my favorite of the three because I think it gives a big picture of how have we progressed over the years. Keep in mind, though, that on your first two pages, we wouldn't want to compare 2017 to any of the other years because you're talking about different assessments and different standards. The last document that I provided for you in your packet is the APR calculations that were provided to Dr. Cargill when she requested them from DESI. I would encourage you to start your look over here on the far right-hand side at this column that's titled caption total. This is going to tell you the points that we scored in each of the categories. So, you'll see that we had 12 points earned in ELA, none in math, none in science. You'll see under academic achievement, but our subgroups, we had three in ELA, two in math, none in science. Standard three, which is college and career readiness, you see we had six, 10, and 10. Attendance, we earned six, and then graduation, we earned 30. That was a total of 79 points for a 60.8 percentage overall. So, in summary, we tentatively have a year to another two years of MSIP 5 before DESI transitions into MSIP 6. Lots of very similar indicators, but also, we're excited and hopeful because it appears that there are going to be some more broader categories that are honored as part of the state accreditation system. So, looking at things like what formative assessments look like in districts, how is pre-K and early learning being utilized, how are districts using internships and other real-world learning opportunities? All of those are potentially items that will come up for grabs under MSIP 6. Again, it's all speculation at this point. The state board still has to prove what those standards are before the measures are made. You know, I personally am hopeful with the progress that we've seen. I think it's hard to look at, it's hard to look at that, to these documents and see that. I'm fortunate to be in a position to get to see all of the supports we provide to kids, both academic and non-academic. We, I really want to highlight our STEAM and project-based learning expansion, the small learning communities work and workaround real-world learning that's happening at the high school level, and the kudos and good work that we've gotten from the Kaufman Foundation. And really firmly believe that our kids in our district is bigger and better than the 10 to 15-hour tests that kids sit and take in April. We want kids to be prepared academically when they leave, absolutely. So, I hope, I hope you hear that message from me. I want to end with, Mr. Allen and I shared with you last month, some information about our real-world learning visit and how other districts are approaching real-world learning and approaching their State Department requirements a little bit differently. And last month, Dr. Cargill, Ms. Franklin, and I attended the Kaufman Real World Learning Superintendent's Forum, and they shared this video that was, the video is of, it showcases Iowa Big High School, and it's a high school that's a really rethinking school in a big way. And it's our goal to get to this through our partnership with Prep KC and in conjunction with Greenview and Center as we work towards that May pitch that is getting closer and closer. So, I am going to end with this video, and then I will be happy to take questions.
This is a high school. This is your classroom. This is a desk. This is a teacher. This is your book, and this is the bell. Now, take everything you thought about high school and think again. This is Iowa Big. This is your classroom. This is a desk. This is a teacher. This is your book, and this is the bell. Now, this is a student. This is first period. This is second period. This is third period. This is fourth period. This is fifth period. This is sixth period. This is seventh period. This is identical to tomorrow, and the next day, and the next day. Now, take everything you thought about being a student and think again. This is first period. This is tomorrow, and the next day, and the next day. This is not the same as high school. We both work hard. We both strive for greatness. Big is just something new. Big is a new way to define school, a new way to define a student, a new way to define learning. Now, think of your biggest ideas, the ones you could only imagine as a child, the ones you were told to put in a box, your biggest dreams, your biggest ambitions, set them free, your big idea.
I don't like how we let things happen, they're so preventable.
I don't like how we dehumanize each other.
Inspire young women to achieve the things that they want to.
I created a curriculum that inspired students to think.
I love how we're more alike than we are different.
Now, multiply it by 100, by 1,000, make it bigger, better, braver, weirder. Now, let's talk about school culture. Everyone has their group. Everyone has a desire to be first. Everyone is striving to be the best. Big is different. At Big, there is no first, there is no best. Here, we all thrive. When one succeeds, we all succeed. We walk to the beat of a different drum. At Big, the end isn't written. Big doesn't define you, you define Big. You inspire, you create, you hustle, you are in control. You are the next generation of Iowa Big. You are the next generation of creators, movers, shakers, entrepreneurs, game changers, artists, founders, drivers, owners. Good morning, it's time to rise.
So, we're not Iowa Big, but we certainly want to prepare our kids to be able to do the things that they're doing there. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry, President Reagan. I think you're doing a great job in your, in your college and career readiness. You know, for years, I've seen you make the presentation, and you're really making improvement. The things that I'm concerned about is the English and the math. And so, I, you know, and I think it's difficult because kids, you know, they're caught up in the computer age and very seldom do they read a book. And I think, this is just as a teacher, one of the things that concerns me is, you know, do children know how to read? And so, you know, I think if we focused on an intense reading program, if by third grades, if our students are not reading, we need to have something for them. Because I think a lot of it has to do with reading, and then sometimes the culture of our school and all the things that are going on with the behaviors, it makes it very difficult for the students to learn, as well as the student, as well as the teacher to teach. So, I think those are some areas that we can look at and try to make better, you know what I'm saying? But I think you're doing a good job, and I know we're moving along, but I think in the reading and math, you know, you know, there's going to have to point, a point in time where we're going to have to really be innovative and do something about that to get those scores up, you know?
Yeah, I absolutely agree. We know that kids aren't going to be prepared to do real-world learning unless they've got the foundations in read, write, and arithmetic. We are pleased that math scores do seem to be trending higher, so that's a good thing. We definitely know and recognize that we've got to do some work with literacy, both the MAP test and our internal I-ready data says that. And really working on what are the strategies that teachers are using, and are they using the district curriculum the way it should be used? Those are all things that absolutely we've got to continue to progress in.
Well, you know, I do have a question because, I mean, I'm glad that you brought this, Think Big. During the Monday Education Accountability Committee meeting, Latanya Franklin shared the STAR data again, which we've seen it multiple times. Can you explain to the board the measures we're taking to address our kids, 50 and 60% of our kids being two and three grades below in reading and math?
Ms. Franklin, you want to share anymore? You want me to jump in?
I mean, if you could briefly share with us, you know, what are some of the interventions that the district is doing to address the students that are, the high percentage of students that are two and three grades behind in the content areas?
So, the, the first intervention that I would say we've, we've implemented as a district was looking at the curriculum itself. And so, we did see that there was a need to have a new curriculum implemented district-wide, adopted district-wide, and so, we started there. In addition to that, I mean, we also implemented our pre-K through third-grade literacy plan. And so, that was something that was initiated when I, I think it was my first year here in Hickman Mills, because we have noticed that there is an issue with literacy. And focusing on those foundational grades, it's really what we have to focus on. I mean, that's, that's where students are learning how to read, which is really why it's important for us to really focus on our pre-K program. The resource that we're currently using specifically as it relates to reading and literacy really allows the teachers to have access to all of the resources that they need to intervene and enrich. And so, for students who are not performing on grade level, the curriculum provides intervention resources and enrichment resources. In addition to that, our formative assessment also provides opportunities for teachers to intervene with activities and lessons that are aligned to the standards that students are displaying that they're low in. And so, I mean, we have a litany of resources for teachers to utilize. We also offer tutoring for students, summer school, and a host of online support, personalized learning, supplemental resources. So, so we do have a litany of resources, and we've also provided professional development through Prep KC that focuses on literacy for kindergarten through third-grade teachers. So, we've tried to attack this from all angles. One of the things that we are really targeting at this point is looking at what instruction looks like in the classroom. And as Ms. Rowe mentioned, really making sure that we have a use of the curriculum with fidelity. And, you know, that's something that we have to continuously monitor because it really is a challenge for teachers to use the curriculum with fidelity sometimes if it's not something that they're accustomed to or something that they don't feel comfortable with. And so, it's something that we have to monitor and make sure it's happening so we can ensure that students are receiving the quality instruction that they, they deserve in all of our sites. So, I hope that helps with answering the question.
I'll add to that, to the information Ms. Franklin has shared. In addition to that, as a district-level administrative team, the executive leadership team, along with other district-level leaders, are committing time in buildings twice per month. And so, what that means is the district leaders are focusing our attention on visiting classrooms and providing direct feedback to building leaders so that they can provide direct feedback to, to teachers as well, all with the focus of improving instruction and providing rigorous teaching and learning. The entire Student Services Department is also conducting building walkthrough visits in classrooms to focus our attention on those subgroups, our students with IEPs as well as our English language learners. And so, there is an increased focus from the top down on instruction and providing feedback, ensuring our building leaders and teachers how important it is to increase teaching and learning, improve, enhance teacher, teacher instruction in the classroom and feedback to teachers. And so, we continue to focus our efforts there. We won't stop, we aren't stopping. We continue to make sure that all staff know how important it is to continue monitor, monitoring student performance.
No, go ahead, Joe, I'll wait.
I know that we have some unique circumstances in our district as well as Kansas City. And I, and I heard you describe, well, we can see what some of the weaknesses are and what's trying to be done, in process to improve that. Do we, on an ongoing basis, evaluate where we are as we move up this ladder of progress? And, and how do we do that? I'm not an educator, and I'm, so I can't, I have to ask the question because I don't know the answer. So, so how do we, you know, we've got something new that's, that's in process. So how do we, you know, we've got something new that's in process. Ms. Franklin said that. So how do we evaluate that as we're going to see, before the end of a period? How do we see over, at certain periods of time whether we're making some progress?
Absolutely. Great question. So I would say two ways. The primary way is our formative assessment, which is iReady this year. It used to be STAR. So we're always looking at, students take that three times a year. So they took it in August, September. They're taking it right now, and they'll take it again in April, May. So from, we'll get results here by the end of January. And so really looking at those students, those grade levels, those buildings, and those content areas where we're seeing growth, and what are those teachers or buildings doing differently? So that gives us a pretty good snippet of what areas do we need to have some greater concentration on. The other thing is really informal feedback. So doing walkthroughs. Ms. Franklin and I are constantly in buildings, walking classrooms with principals, giving feedback, looking at benchmark charts on the wall. How are kids getting through the material? Are teachers getting through the material? So should we be on benchmark twelve and we're only on three? That's all feedback to monitor how we're progressing. The last piece is that every principal has a quarterly data talk with Ms. Franklin and I. Dr. Cargill joins those. And principals have to present a multitude of data points. One of those is iReady, of course, because that's a big exam that mimics the MAP. So we hope to see a good correlation. There's linking charts that link student performance on iReady to student performance on MAP. But the other piece is looking at teacher predictions. So teachers fill out what we call achievement level charts. They will literally put student's name on a piece of paper that we've given them, and they will say, do they predict the student's gonna be advanced, proficient, basic, below basic? They're not pulling that out of a hat, of course, right? So they're looking at the iReady score. They're looking at the benchmarks, the scrimmages. How is the student progressing? Are they coming to tutoring? So they do that three times a year. Teachers do. They then provide their data to principals, who then present it to the both of us. So those are the informal measures. Same type of monitoring happens in the other category. So for the college and career readiness, attendance, and graduation, just on a little bit different scale. But yeah, we absolutely are looking at that data to see how we're progressing through the year.
Now, do, there are ten districts in our consortium. Do each of them have the same areas that we have, it's just approached a different way? Or they're approached the same way, it's just that they have different demographics?
What do you mean by areas? Like the areas for these?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, everybody's measured on the same, so everybody in Missouri is held to, we need to get to this score.
Okay, I thought that, now, are they approaching this any different than we are? Different school districts approach it differently? And the reason I ask that is that, because I'm looking at the success side. And you talk about some new initiatives that we've got going on. But I'm wondering if Center and Grandview, particularly Grandview, has about the same demographic that we have here. And they're not in that, in our category. They're not provisional. So I'm saying, are they doing something in those categories where we're low that we're not doing? And using the process to move beyond, move up in that area that we're not?
Well, I will say that, yes, districts kind of have their own things. So some districts use different curriculum resources, different assessments. A place like Grandview that you referenced uses iReady. There's a lot of similarities in terms of what we're using there for curriculum resources. I absolutely respect your opinion, but I'm gonna share some data with Dr. Cargill to then share with you that Grandview was not much like us in terms of demographics. It's really hard, Director Brooks, it's really hard to find a district that is truly like us. Except Kansas City Public Schools, and then a couple of schools on the St. Louis side. When you look at demographics, socioeconomic status, and mobility being the three. So I'm working on getting those numbers to share with you so that you can kind of look and form your own opinions about who looks like us. But yeah, every district kind of has their own things. We're lucky to work with Prep KC, who networks with a lot of districts around here, Center and Grandview being two of the big ones. So they're always sharing feedback with us about, oh, well, Center's trying this resource, and teachers really respond to it, et cetera. So we do get that kind of feedback to help inform our decision-making as well.
I mentioned that to Dr. Cargill. She's passed, and she's always worked on it. But I'd like to know, mobility rate, what percentage, free lunch, and all those things. Now, one thing that I'm always cautious of is that once we get that information and we see why that we're doing this, that we don't get into the mindset that, well, okay, our kids can't learn because, and we use that as an excuse. And that bothers me. And I know it's happened, particularly with kids of color and poor communities. It's happened throughout the whole educational system, and so there's nothing new. And so we have to be very careful. It's that whole thing, you bring some teachers in and say, these kids are bright. And then they turn out, and you say, these kids aren't gonna make it. But what it is, the ones who are bright, that you said are bright, are the ones who you thought can make it. So it's just different what you say. So it is a psychology there, that being very careful how we handle that information. And I don't want it to come back, and then we make excuses for ourselves. Well, we're not doing any better because we have one percent free lunch, ninety percent mobility, six percent more, all those kind of things. And so I think that whatever we put out there, not only to the board, but to the parents, to the community in general, that means we've got to do a lot more to get kids where they ought to be.
And maybe in a different way.
Rather than use negative excuses to why they're not there. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, I'll wait till he finishes.
Well, I've looked at, I've had a chance to digest all the things that Ms. Franklin did at the Education Committee. And I've taken it from the iReady, from the STAR to the iReady. And when Director Watry and Director Carter and President Briggs was all present also. We seem to, and Mrs. Graves touched on it before. What is happening in our district, and we still try, we don't look at it. We cannot read. We cannot write. And we cannot, in our arithmetic. And the tier-two scores show that. Somehow, some way, and then I looked at, and then I looked at when the president of the Missouri Desi came in here, I think her name, Marge Van Deven?
Van Deven.
Yeah, Ms. Van Deven already warned us. And then we have this new thing that's out on the House right now. They're talking about the charter schools coming back again and all that stuff. And we scored sixty point eight again, and we went backwards. So then I looked, and then I started looking into it a little deeper. And then I said, well, we say that we're graduating students at a high percentage. But when I look at the tier-two, and I'm looking at my students are behind in math and reading, but we're graduating. Mr. Reagan, that's something wrong there. I mean, you know, we, and I've said this before, and this ain't nothing new. I'm just shocked because I'm thankful for the state. I thank the state. They are graceful, and they're being merciful on us. I am. I'm very grateful. I'm very, I owe them applause. Because I cannot figure out how we, we have a high percent, something's not adding up. You say we have a high percentage on college career, college and career readiness, and we're graduating at a high mobility. But then when I look at my tier-two scores and my tier-one scores, then we have changed over from the STAR to the iReady. I still can't, so that means to tell me, it says to me here, Mr. Reagan, look, yeah, we're graduating students, but are they reading? Are they writing? Can they do the arithmetic? So how are we tackling that? I mean, we've talked about all the stuff. I don't know if we've ever brought it back about the teachers really, how they look. Discipline is in this, and I've said this before. Discipline is playing a role in this, simply because a lot of people are not able to teach their classrooms. But how are you guys going? My question to you all is, because we don't know, yeah, I am. We know that we're not reading, writing, and arithmetic. Tackle it. Where's the curriculum for that? I guess that's my question.
Dr. Cargill, can you answer the question that he's asking about?
The entire Educational Accountability Committee meeting on Monday spent the time explaining to those who attended. Vice President Reagan, you were there. Ms. Franklin spent an extensive amount of time explaining the curriculum. So I'm not sure if you have an additional question about the curriculum resources that we're using and the training that's been provided? Is there a specific question?
Well, ma'am, like I said, I had a chance to digest it all. Superintendent Cargill, I've had a chance to digest it. And then I've seen that we are passing students. As we see, our stuff is high when we're graduating our students. But then when I looked at all the stuff, so yes, ma'am, looking at the curriculum, we have, I don't know how great this curriculum is. That's what my question is.
Okay, I think, hold on.
Ms. Graves got one.
I think we have a couple more questions. I do want to remind the board, this is so important. That's why we've visited this topic a few times. But I do want to remind the board of the two-minute statements to be made. I think Director Graves was next.
Yeah, you know, I'm gonna make mine very quick. I'm not here to criticize. I'm a teacher myself, and I do my students do iReady, and I turn around and look at them, tap them, and go on something else. So you can come out with the best of plans, but that doesn't always mean the students are gonna follow through. And so as a board member, we look at the scores, and we say, God, what's going on? You know? But as a teacher, I understand. So my role is, I want us to do well, and I want to do whatever support that I can bring to the administration, whatever I can do. I want to do, because I know it's a tough job. But I know that we're gonna have to do something radical, you know, especially in those elementary. High school is different, you know, the small learning communities. So that's all I want to say. I don't want to take up any more time. But, you know, as I'm asking you questions, I don't want you to think that I don't support you, you and Ms. Franklin, or even Dr. Cargill. I do, you know? But I'm just saying, as board members, we look at the scores, and like, oh, God, you know what I'm saying? So that's all I have to say, Ms. Rowe.
Can I say?
Director Carter?
I was gonna backpedal off of Mr. Reagan, and also, looking at the scores and seeing that the graduation rate is pretty high, and it looks like we're on track, we're doing very well. But looking at the scores in math and English, that's where I don't see the balance. And seeing that our students cannot read, they're about two grade levels behind, that really bothers me to see, if you're graduating, are you able to read? But my thing is, where do we start to notice that these kids need help? How quickly are we acting to this? Because, like you said, by the time they get to third grade and they're not reading at their grade level, where do we start tackling this and noticing, okay, this kid right needs additional help? This kid right here might need an IUP. Because from what I'm understanding, the IUP only comes from when a teacher recommends this. So if, or if someone recommends this. But if we are not taking action on this, then they're getting to third grade, still having a first-grade reading level or a second-grade reading level. My thing is, we need to look a little bit closely and start attacking this as soon as possible. Because as they get out, as they get further and further along in the grade, they're falling further and further behind. And these numbers are here, I mean, numbers don't lie. It's right here, proof right here in front of us. I'm not blaming nobody, but we all have to work together and figure it out somehow. We can't blame each other. We gotta work together. And I just don't like that these children are so behind in reading. Maybe technology needs to be eliminated. Maybe we need to go back into textbooks. I agree. Math, I mean, we need technology for the real world, but if they can't read, how are you going to be in the real world? If you're graduating and you can't read, what are we setting them up for? Not success? And this really bothers me, and I'm sorry to say, but I just want to know, where do we approach these areas? Where do we start taking action? What grade level? Instead of waiting until they get to third grade? Maybe kindergarten is probably where we, first kindergarten, where do we start?
Director Watry?
So I was able to.
I think they're asking the same thing.
Yeah, so I was able to attend both the December ninth Education Accountability Committee, as well as the one that took place this week. From what I understand, and I know that, Ms. Rowe, you've explained it a couple of times. I had printed off the Education Accountability Committee from December ninth, where you had kind of answered a lot of our questions kind of already. In a sense of, what can we, what are we doing about curriculum? Well, the iReady is the new curriculum. Even so much as with Mr. Brooks' question of, you know, what are the comparison between districts? The curriculum between Grandview and us right now has kind of become the same thing. I also asked a question in the Education Accountability Committee that had to do with the tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three, where I understand we have just taken the foundation, pretty much got, seeing where we need to work and where we need improvement. I believe the grades in which you pulled, one of them was the third grade. Am I correct? Okay, so that kind of answers that question. The aspect of curriculum, that kind of answers that question on what we're going to do differently. I understand that in looking at these scores, the issue in which my colleagues are trying to address is kind of, the answer's kind of been answered as far as the things that you've done differently within this last year. Changing curriculum and applying it to curriculum. Even looking at the scores and seeing the minimal improvements of reading and math, it was also within those, within our Education Accountability Committee this week that you had provided, that was provided, I think by Ms. Franklin. Where we are and what we stand to do with those tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three. So I commend you on seeing this information, addressing it with curriculum on how you're gonna do it, and addressing us for the ultimate time. I, I'm thankful.
Well, if, really, I think, we're in the business of educating children. And I'm gonna have to side with Mrs. Graves on this one. It's definitely gonna take a radical approach to solving this problem. And it is a problem. I mean, you can say what we're doing at the third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth grade level. But at the end of the day, there is a problem here that needs some solutions. And the commitment of the effort and this and that, Vice President Reagan shared, and a number of board members have various concerns. I would just hope as a district and as a body of administrators, that we figure this out together and not delay the process any more than we already have.
Madam President?
Yes.
So, I have a background in research. And with research, we are given, you're given a hypothesis of what you're going to change. Then you're also given the standard data, which, data, the data that provides it tells you where you're at. And then you kind of have what you're going to do differently. And then you test that theory. When it comes to implementation of these, of this new curriculum, we are at the stage in which we are implementing the changes that the board has asked for. And I want my board members to understand that right now, the questions in which you're asking are being addressed. And what I mean by addressed, and I mean it in the past tense in the sense of, what are we doing about curriculum, iReady? What are we doing about these test scores in the sense of looking at these test scores and trying to see what we can do to improve them? Changing curriculum. The new five-year strategic plan addresses that as well. And even so much in the sense of the revision of handbooks and to address the actual aspect of discipline. Right now, when it comes to implementation, as if this is essentially a research project, we already have chosen the things, we are able to see the variables that are taking place, and we need to see it play through. But sitting here, the commending aspect, which I provide, comes from the fact that you have found variables that need to be addressed and are addressing them so that by the end of this year, the questions that we're asking right now can actually be answered. In the sense of, what did we see differently? So I commend you again.
If I may, I absolutely acknowledge, and we as a CNI team acknowledge, the improvements that we need to continue working towards in academic achievement. But I would be remiss if I did not say on camera that our high school students are required to meet twenty-six credits for graduation. And teachers create syllabi for those courses, and they assign grades to those students, and the teachers post those grades. Counselors work to do credit checks and monitor students' progress. The counselor must sign off on whether or not they meet those graduation requirements. April Allen, sitting behind me, works tirelessly every day and night, keeping track of our juniors and seniors, enrolling kids in Play-Doh, helping them through summer school. There are a lot of safety nets in place, but when we say ninety percent of kids... There are a lot of safety nets in place, but when we say ninety percent of kids, eighty-nine point three percent of kids are graduating, they're meeting the board requirement of twenty-six credits. I had to add that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we are moving on to, um, consent items eight point zero. And the chair is seeking a motion to approve eight point one through eight point four.
Madam President, I move that, I was looking for the, uh, one on the, um, Social Security Healthcare Insurance Consultant. I didn't, we want any, I think everyone had an opportunity to, to see the, um, the, um, video, whatever, about that, and if there, and I don't, if there are any questions, I'm sure that the President or Ms. Brooks is, uh, could, can answer that or myself. But if there are none, I would move that we, uh, accept the consent items eight point one, two, three, and four, uh, as, uh, as presented. Can I get a second?
I'll second, um.
Discussion? All right. Director Carter? Director Brooks?
Aye.
Director Graves? Director Abram?
Aye.
Director Watry?
Aye.
Vice President Reagan? President Briggs?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. All right, new business, uh, item nine point one, the finance report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the financial report as of December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Um, the total revenues, um, the working budget is sitting at ninety million three. Um, we received in fourteen million five sixty-four in receipts in December, the majority of that being Jackson County. Um, year-to-date receipts, um, were at thirty-six million four, with the remaining budget to be received at fifty-three million nine. Uh, percent of funds received as of December thirty-first were forty percent, compared to the forty-one percent at this time last year. The expenses, uh, the working budget is sitting at eighty-four million eight. Um, the expenses for December were five million eight. Year-to-date, we're at thirty-five million seven, with the remaining budget to be spent at forty-nine million one. Percent of expenses paid are at forty-two, compared to the forty percent we'd spent at this time last year. And that does have to do with the fact that it's tighter, and so the budget is a little bit tighter, so, uh, the percentage is a little bit higher. Um, budget changes, there were not any major, there were no adds to the budget this month. Did I pass it? And the fund balance, we're s- still sitting at a fourteen point seven two two, um, with the projected for twenty twenty-one of a nineteen point four. Um, a twenty-three percent at the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and a twenty-five at the end of twenty-two, twenty-three. And there were no new business items to be put on at the time. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Yes, ma'am, I-
Yes.
So that percentage only moved, uh, simply because of the new things that had happened for the, uh,
Yes.
Twenty-eight, nine, yeah.
Yes, right here, uh-huh. And those that happened previously, so the last change was made in, in November. So there were no major changes that affected the percent this month, so it's the same as it was last month. I do want to say that the tax anticipation note was paid off, um, on, uh, last Friday, the tenth, so that's been taken care of, so.
And our insurance is almost called up.
Yes, and I actually did get the December financials, and we came in at fifty-one thousand in the black, so we're down to two hundred and nine thousand that we still have, so we're getting there.
If I might, Madam President, just that, uh, last evening, I asked Ms., uh, uh, Wilson about the, um, the money from Cerner, and you know my feelings about Cerner, every time I bring it up, I, I have to take a drink of water. So we did get a, is this the second of our six million dollars?
Yes, this was the second payment, the one that we invoiced for in June. We received actually the morning after the last board meeting, when we were asked. So we, it was a two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollar check that we received. So we'll be doing another invoice and sending it off here shortly.
So, do you recall that, what those two totals are?
And the first one was a hundred and thirty-five thousand, and this one was two ninety-nine, so we're sitting right at three hundred and thirty-five, three hundred and thirty-six thousand that we've invoiced for so far.
So probably in the next, we can do it twice a year?
Yes, we, we try to do it in, like, the first semester and then the second semester, but we have not done the first semester at all this year, so.
So in, the rate we're going now in three years, they'll be, they'll be finished with us?
Yeah, I mean, we still, we have-
Four maybe.
Yeah, maybe.
Is it possible to kinda track that on a separate slide?
Yep, I can do that.
Yeah, that, that way we can kinda keep a, uh, eye on it.
Yes, I'll add it, make sure it's on the slide for next month.
Thank you.
All right, MSBA policy update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, I'm gonna see if I can figure out how to do that.
I'm sorry, is, is it icing outside?
I think so.
It's not?
Oh, it's not?
Okay, all right, I just wanted to check out, something popped up on my phone.
Keith or Johnny, can you open that, please, attachment?
Wait, is this the one, I've got, I can open?
Oh, I thought you said, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I just didn't know, uh, is this, this is the next item? Is the, the first read, is that the next item? Uh, okay. Um, so, the Policy Committee met and is recommending, um, as you all know, you all are on your second read for some of, um, MSBA board policies. Um, there was an additional policy, MSBA recommended policy, oh gosh. I say I can do this, there we go. Um, a second MSBA, um, an additional MSBA policy that the Policy Committee wanted to bring forward to this board for first read, and that is the revision to policy EBBA, um, and it's actually administrative procedure, EBBA AP one. Um, the revision to this is that, um, naloxone has been added as a, as a recommended, um, drug to be housed at, um, within the schools, and it's, uh, designed to address opioid overdoses. Um, it's a medication that will reverse an opioid overdose. Um, it, this is one of the MSBA policy recommendations, and so, um, the Policy Committee wanted to bring forward, uh, that policy revision for first read, um, by this board. I don't know if there were any questions for me on that, or for the Policy Committee?
Just highlight that, what that recommendation is.
Um, that the district, any district that chooses to stock this would work with a licensed prescriber to develop administrative protocols. And the revision would be that, um, it's number five, and it's highlighted on the document that you all have. It says that naloxone will be administered when available by nurses and other trained, and others trained in the administration, of the administration, um, of the drug to individuals suspected of having an opioid-related drug overdose. So that would be added to the, um, medical emergency medications that would be stocked by dis- by the district.
And that's not a narcotic, correct?
Cor- correct. It's a dr- it's a, it's, okay, so let me not answer that. I am not positive, um, with regard to that. It's, it's designed to reverse an opioid overdose.
It counters the effects of an overdose. Um, just also, as the board considers whether you will adopt this policy or not, knowing that it was coming up, I wanted to gather and collect information for you to know. Uh, members of my team have reached out to various. Uh, Mrs. Rowe checked in with the secondary principals, Mr. Weekly checked in with Sergeant Daxter, who then connected with South Patrol. Uh, our secondary leaders report there, there are not concerns of opioid use at, among our students in the Hickman Mill School District, and Sergeant Daxter reports that there are, have not been, um, a large number of reports or instances that South Patrol has responded to in this area. And so I'm, I just, I like to provide context for you so that the board knows that this isn't, or has not been, an issue that we have been dealing with in the Hickman Mill School District.
Thank you.
Okay. So, um, this one will come up again next month for second read and vote by, um, by this body. Um, the next item that I have is the second read on the MSBA policies that were presented last month. Um, those policies were, have been reviewed by the Policy Committee twice. They've come before this board last month for consideration. Um, I have not received additional questions from any, uh, director on any of the policies. I don't believe the Policy Committee has either. Um, and so, I would open the floor for any questions that anyone has on any of those policies.
Approve them if you're ready.
If you all are ready.
Uh, Director Watry, if you're ready to approve that, let's go.
I would, I would approve, and I would move so that we, if there are no, um, conflicts or discussion, that we approve these, uh, these policies as they have been read by, um-
And I, I can't get the document to open, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I'm watching you do it. Um, I, what I'm recommending is that, I move that to recommend that the policies in which the MSBA has provided updates that have been reviewed by my colleagues be, uh, approved into, into our policies. That's a motion.
It's been moved in second to accept those, um, I can't see, all the way up there, B, B, C.
I can read them through. So, uh, BCC, DCA, AP, dash AP one, uh, DFA, BH, DI, DEBBA.
I don't know if we're giving an eye exam.
It doesn't it? Uh, EHBH dash AP one, uh, GBCV, GBCBB, GCL, JHC, KK.
That's the end of them.
Discussion? Vice President Reagan? Director Brooks?
Aye.
Director Carter?
Aye.
Director Graves?
Aye.
Director, uh, Abram?
Aye.
Director Watry?
Aye.
Chair of House, I, motion carries to accept the policies. All right, we have two things added and update regarding the TIF.
Um, so, uh, directors, as you all are aware, we have been in communication with, um, Cerner regarding, um, their relationship with the district. Um, most specifically, um, we've had, we had a conversation, a meeting, um, that was attended by Dr. Cargill, President Briggs, Vice President Reagan, myself, and Taylor from my office, um, to have a conversation, to try and open some dialogue with Cerner on several issues, um, related to the TIF and the impact that the TIF has, TIF has had financially on, um, on our district. Um, Dr. Cargill was a rock star, um, in that presentation, she did an amazing job, and both of your, um, directors did an outstanding job, uh, representing you, um, at that meeting. And so, you know, we went over with, um, Cerner and reminded them that this is a four point four or five billion dollar TIF, one of the largest ones in the history of the United States, that almost nine hundred million dollars is going to Cerner, and that the development agreement that was entered into, um, in terms of a benefit to the district, provided six million dollars to the district, of which, um, to date, we have, uh, received, I believe, is it four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars? Does that sound right? Um, and that has been through struggle and, and, and pulling teeth. And so, um, you know, we wanted to try and open dialogue with Cerner about some of the needs that were, were, that were in the district, some of the things that we felt that Cerner could help and provide support, um, to the district, um, on, and, um, have a conversation about our inability to be able to adequately access the six million dollars that, uh, we have been, um, provided through the develop, the, the development agreement to the TIF. Um, and so following that meeting, my office sent a letter to Cerner kinda summarizing what our positions were, and, and providing some specific asks, um, monetary asks, and support asks of, um, Cerner, and we have received a response. Um, and they, you know, they, uh, thanked us and, um, you know, reiterated their commitment to the community, um, and expressed some concern about, um, making specific guarantees in the, in their correspondence then, but, um, indicated that they wanted to open the dialogue, more collaboratively, and, and have stronger discussions with the district, um, to try and see what additional supports can be provided to, um, to the district. And so, and they suggested that, um, that may be best served without counsel, being a part of, being a part of that, um, part of that conversation, that they felt that, uh, that we may, we may bog things down a little bit. And so, I'm not sure that I agree with that, but, um, that was their recommendation. And so, um, I think, you know, for, for this board, next steps should be some discussion about, you know, how to, to approach, um, Cerner in terms of further conversation. Um, we will work to get a next meeting scheduled, um, to have some more conversation with them. They certainly indicated their willingness to provide whatever support they can to ensure that we can access the six million dollars that we're entitled to access. Part of the problem with our ability to be able to do that is that there's a committee that has to approve that, and that committee hasn't been active. And so, um, Dr. Cargill, my office, we've all been working to try and get, um, get that committee formulated, and, and, you know, the three individuals, there's a representative from the city, a representative from the district, and a representative from Cerner that serves on the committee that's supposed to approve our request for funds. They, Cerner has certainly said they don't want to stand in the way of our ability to be able to access those funds. They have not attempted to do that. Um, and so, um, you know, they are prepared to make their recommendation for who's on the committee. Um, we have had conversations with the mayor, with, um, with Heather Brown at the TIF Commission. Um, we've had conversations with, um, the acting, uh, city manager all about, uh, trying to get this committee formulated. And so we did receive a phone call yesterday from Councilwoman Shaw. Um, and so, that committee is gonna get, um, created here very quickly. So accessing the six million dollars that we've already been, um, provided through the development agreement should move forward better. Um, but I think it's important that, that this board, um, work toward, you know, coming up with what the next steps are for, um, pushing and putting pressure on Cerner. They certainly have indicated a willingness to come to the table and have a conversation about things that they, um, can do to, um, support the district. And I think that, you know, it's important that we capitalize on that opportunity and, and, uh, push.
And you, you're gonna work on coordinating another meeting?
Yes.
I'd like to throw out for, for some consideration, that, that we may-
that we meet with, there are two districts, council managed districts involved in this, the Fifth and the Sixth. Barnes and, is the head large person in the Fifth? And, help me with the other, in district. All right, Brooks. Who's the in-district person at the Fifth District?
Rayna? Rayna Parkshaw.
And then the Sixth District is Kevin McManus and Boo. Might I suggest that we meet, try to get a meeting with the four of them? And have them to, I don't know what committees, I don't know the committee structure for this round, but to have them, have Cerner to come before the committee and make some inquiries about their concerns and interest in the Hickman Mill School District. Since the student population comes from both sides of, I guess, Bannister, which is divided, I think, between the Fifth and Sixth, or 85th Street, 87th Street. It seems to me that those elected officials ought to be interested in, and it may not be their fault, it might be our fault because we haven't approached them, in what's happening in this school district. Also, we have state representatives and a senator. Now, I understand that their two senators might be dividing this district, the Seventh and the Ninth Senatorial Districts, as well as the state representative. They ought to be interested in this. They were the ones who wrote the letters when we tried to close the school, although they didn't read the report. But I think that to let them know and that get them engaged in this whole thing with us. So, I think that's the suggestion I offer, you know, what have we got to lose?
No, I am glad to, you know, we have, like I said, we've had conversations with Councilwoman Parkshaw on this issue. And so, I'm glad to work towards coordinating that meeting. I think I.
I'd like to be in the meeting when you meet Ms. Cerner, please. But I'm serious, if we can get those folks. And now, the state representative, we're in the 36th District, which McGee Hill, and that person, that new person has not been named. And I understand that Hoesman, who's the Seventh District, the senator, is going into the commission, so his vacancy will be, his position will be vacant. But whoever the replacement are, I think we need to sit down with him as soon as possible.
Okay.
Does that make sense, Board President?
I'll let her take this. Yeah, she's gone, she had it. Yeah. And I also would like to maybe call some of the pastors that's in this area together. I mean, who would know the community as well, too, along with those people that you are talking about, Director Brooks. As much help as we need to get, to put the pressure on them, would be the best thing, you know. And I just look, didn't there used to be Union Kaufman down there? They bought that building from them, Marion Lavator's, one that down there, originally, down. Where they getting that?
Yes. But if you look at that whole development, that's a whole new, they're going to be a whole new city over there, with a hotel and shops, that we won't be, but it's not for the community. It's for their 13,000 employees. You may pass by and do something, but you don't want me to go in there.
I did also want to report that at the last TIF Commission, you know, the Cerner had applied for an amendment to their TIF to pull a certain portion of the TIF, the project, out of the TIF. And that that portion of the project, one of the controversial issues with regard to it was that they were proposing not to utilize MBEs and WBEs on that project. I understand, and Dr. Cargile may be able to correct me better, but at the last TIF Commission, they pulled that amendment from the floor, so they're no longer seeking to amend the TIF at this point.
And that should tell us what their feeling, they don't even want to. Oh, God, please.
All right, we have one more update amendment to the agenda, and that was the amendment that Mr. Brooks made.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, and thank all of you for voting that. I followed pretty closely, the only through bits and pieces of email that started out with regard to the cancellation of the Education Committee meeting. And sometimes it's not what you say is how you say it, what you do is how you do it. And after hearing from the emails that come through from Chair Abrams and Vice Chair Graves, it seemed to me that we ought to know how to do that. I have some concerns about when the chair sent out that because of the illness or whatever, he and his vice president, they were council meeting, and when the other day, then the president comes through and says, well, no, we're going to have the meeting, and then the vice president, I'll be there, and then the third member, Ms. Carter, said, well, I'll be there. It seems to me that that created some inner kind of relationships, and I could tell from some of the emails that floated around. And I think even got the superintendent involved, although she was the one who was manipulating the meeting. And I think that it, we've got enough friction going on, and, you know, sometimes our own worst enemy is ourselves. And I think if we're going to really coalesce and be a board that respectful and of each other, it should have been the day before yesterday, but if you haven't done it then, at least we'll go forward. And I just wanted the council to say, how should that have been? And let me make one other statement. From what I gather, Mr. Abrams had sent this out on a Sunday morning, and I haven't, this, bits and pieces what I have picked up from the email, that to council meeting and reschedule at a different time. And then, about three or four minutes later, the president comes in, and then, now, that was over the 24 hours, which means I would suspect that Ms. Payton sang that and therefore was prepared to go and cancel the meeting, since it was in the 24 hours. But since it came back that the meeting was going to be held, then there was no need for her to end up putting an announcement out that the meeting was going to be canceled. And that created a problem. So, I'm, and I don't know whether the president made contact with Chair Abrams about, well, let's do it this way because it's an emergency, we need to deal with this later on Monday. I don't know whether it was an emergency of that, from what I've heard, the discussion with an emergency could be handled at another time. So, I'm concerned about that. And I'd like for you, our council, to kind of set the stage. How should we do that? Because I'm chair of a committee, and there are some other chairs, and I certainly wouldn't have done it that way. But I'm just saying, set the stage first, if you will, how that should have been done.
Well, before Attorney Johnson sets the stage, the agenda was already posted. The week prior, since we want to have this conversation, the week prior to it, there were multiple emails that the board members were not receiving, but went directly to the chairs and the co-chairs and requesting any feedback regarding the Education Committee. After that conversation, because of whatever reason, there was no communication, we still moved forward with our processes in the district business. Vice President Reagan sent out an email to the, because he serves in, on that, back and forth on that committee as well, to Mrs. Graves, to the whole committee, asking for input, feedback, or any updates. There was no response. The agenda was already up there. It was Sunday night. I also contacted the attorney, hold up. I contacted the attorney and said, well, you know, we still move forward because it's still district business. No, I did contact the attorneys and ask.
May I say something? Just real quick. Let me just say something very quickly.
She ain't finished.
Wait a minute.
I said, when you finish, real quick.
This is the last item on the agenda, we're going to stay up in here for this long. I contacted the attorney, I reached out multiple times to the chair, and I'm not going to go into great detail regarding why there was no communication back and forth. And so, Attorney Johnson, you want to wait until Mrs. Graves make her comment?
Miss Graves.
Okay, I just want to say something very quickly. First of all, the board president, nor the vice president, has the authority to cancel a committee meeting. I spoke with Mr. Abrams. He said he didn't feel good. I said, do you have anything pressing on the agenda? If you do, I will struggle to make it up here. He said, no, I'm going to cancel the meeting. Neither one of those individuals had the right to have an education meeting any more than I need to walk down there and tell the board president to get up and sit there and let me run the board meeting. That is not in your authority to do that. First of all, you did not ask me to, was I going to chair the meeting? You didn't ask me that. You all just took it and ran with it, even though Mr. Abrams sent an email out. I spoke with you, Ms. Briggs, I said, well, did you call Mr. Abrams? No, I couldn't get him, and he didn't call back. But I, you know, I don't, I just, I don't think that you are trying to necessarily be mean, but I do think that you are overstepping your authority by having the educational committee when it's just me and him. If he couldn't go, then I go. But if he said cancel it, then we cancel it. What you talked about was something we talked about today. So, I'm just sharing that so everybody will know. Maybe it was important to you to do that, but that's just not the way we should do business in the board. We should not go over someone's head, we should not, you know, we do, we have all these emails, let's pick up the phone and call somebody so that we can get clarity, because there were a lot of emails going out. And you were determined to have that meeting, even though the chair said he canceled. Maybe he didn't get the information to Ms. Payton. But you did not ask, Ms. Graves, I'm going to steal Mr. Reagan, you did not ask me, Ms. Graves, will you chair the meeting? So, I just wanted to make that clear, because I don't think everybody is clear on that. So, that's it.
Okay. Madam President. Yeah, I'm going to make it real quick, just for the record. First of all, we, this has created a division with us already, all of us. So, the first thing, as far as communication, I can never get a hold to some of the people. I am on this meeting and nobody, on this committee, no one ever reached out to me at all. That was the first thing. Second thing is, is that there was a agenda, because this is for the record, we need to let everybody know what's going on, since we're going to do it. Second thing is, is it was something sent out that was supposed to be sent out to everybody. I sent the agenda straight to Mrs. Payton. I asked, I even asked specifically to send it out to Chairman Abrams and Mrs. Graves, everyone that was on this Education Committee. I even called back after I saw that it was not given. And so then, it still wasn't sent. President Briggs did send a thing out to all of us about this agenda meeting, asking us if we wanted to attend. And this was more than 24 hours, 48 hours, and 72 hours, for the record. So, the meeting, I'm still a part of this committee. Hold on, I'll let you speak, I'm going to let you speak, go ahead, since you wanted to stop me. Go ahead and speak. It's not about being the chair, it's about that you overlooked one of your committee members. Neither one of you guys even asked me, did I want to come? Let's just be fair and prompt. Neither one of you even took it up on yourselves. So, at the end of the day, Director Brooks, the meeting was given, 24, 42, 72. Mr. Watry came to a meeting back in December and sat in for Mrs. Graves. I FaceTimed him. See, this is what we don't get a chance. This is the division amongst the brethren.
Vice President Reagan, hold on, give me one second, Reagan.
All right, no problem.
I'm not trying to interrupt.
No, because I want the record to be straight when we talking about each other up here, or when we want to throw each other on blast, or when we want to say something. Be accurate in your writing, what you're saying. Because, see, what's happening now, what's been happening, and it's still going to happen when I'm done, y'all going to go around and say more and more, and y'all going to keep this same stuff up. So, either you're going to work together, or you ain't going to work together. You can't have it one day, y'all want to work together, and then the next day, we back into this, this mumble jumble stuff. So, when it all comes back and boils back, yeah, the meeting came back to her. Yeah, so I'll let you know, because I don't have no problem with telling the truth.
I do want to apologize for being sensitive to board members being out for a while, for whatever reason. I do want to also acknowledge, because this is not, you know, point your finger thing, but I do want to acknowledge the team effort in case of there was going to be some time, board members were not going to be present to do their assignments. I do want to commend Mr. Watry for the willingness to step in in case we didn't have a team to continue with our meetings. We don't know what's promised tomorrow. I do want to commend Director Carter for the willingness to step in in case we were down one or two committee members, for whatever reason, for whatever personal reason. So, this is not just about overstepping the boundary, this was about stepping up in case we were going to be absent a few members because of personal reasons. I apologize for taking the role as a leader and preparing a team in case, in case we were going to be absent. So. You can finish. I do want to make sure that we have a chance for the attorney to answer this, but Director Carter, if you can make your statement.
Oh, no, I wanted to say exactly what you were saying. I do apologize if, you know, people thought that we were out, I was out of boundary. There's no relationship here, so I want to clear that up. There's no relationship. Only thing I was doing, I thought I was being, stepping up to the plate, I didn't know. I thought maybe because the board member's out, that's what we do. If someone can't make it, we step up to the plate. So, I want to say, I apologize if someone took it the wrong way, but that was not my intentions. I've never been to one of those meetings. So, it was really good for me to sit in and get some information on what was going on, and that was it, I was just stepping up. So, I don't want everyone to feel like it's a relationship thing or stepping out of boundary. I apologize if you feel that way. But I think as a board, if we work together, we're going to accomplish way more than sitting here, going back and forth over something that was really not necessary. But that's all I want to say.
Now, without the discussion going on, let me just again state why I asked for this again. I just like for the attorney to say, all the discussions going on, to tell us in the future, if chair of the Finance Committee, if I decide that because of whatever, I'm going to be out of town, I'm sick, that I'd like to cancel the meeting, and then I think as chair, that I have a right to do that with just cause, and then reschedule the meeting. I want to know whether or not someone else should come in and say, no, we're going to have the meeting, now contact me and go forward. That's the question, that's all in the discussion. I just want some direction.
Okay. So, when you posed this question to me today, I tried to do some research, both on committee structures in general and what this board has voted to do with the establishment of committees and how committees are supposed to operate it, operate according to according to this, this committee. And I sent, so, I also sent Dr. Leonard Young an email message asking him to provide some direction to me on how to handle this situation. And as I'm standing here, his email has popped back up, so I haven't had a chance to read it yet, but I'm getting ready to read it here in a second and see what advice he's providing to me. His email literally just came in while I'm standing here. But what I can say is this, and let me provide this caveat first. I wasn't on all the email chains. So, I wasn't, I wasn't operating with information about all the communications that were going on, back and forth with regard to this committee meeting. In terms of committees, what you all, and Robert's rules will indicate that a board can, and MSBA supports this, that a board can make this, a decision to formulate committees if the board wants to formulate committees. Information that is sent to committee is supposed to come through a vote of the board, and that's supposed to direct what's on the committee agenda. In terms of who is appointed to serve on committees and who is appointed to chair committees, that's at the discretion of the president. The president makes the appointments for committee members, and that's what you all voted to do. That doesn't have to be that way, but that's what this body voted to do back in 2018, when the decision was made to formulate committees. to do back in twenty eighteen, when the decision was made to formulate committees, you all formulated a structure on your committees. And so, the Board President can appoint, is to appoint three members to each standing committee, and the Superintendent is supposed to appoint two administrators to each standing committee, and then the committee can decide if they want to include members from the community, in the communities, committee structure. So that's how committees are to be formulated. The question that was posed to me in advance of this meeting was, if, if a Board Member is not able to attend the committee, can the Chair appoint someone in that person's stead? My answer to that was yes. Is, so if we've got committee members that have a period of time that they're not going to be able to operate, the Chair can appoint members to sit in, in the seat of that committee person during that period of time, if there's a need for, for a meeting to go forward. To answer your question, can a committee Chair cancel a meeting? Yes, a committee Chair can make the decision to cancel a meeting. I would recommend, and this is just my personal recommendation, or my professional recommendation, once notice has been published of a meeting, you know, if it's possible for that meeting to move forward, I think it's best for the meeting to move forward after, after it's been noticed up, simply because at this point, you know, I mean, the purpose of noticing it up is so that the community can be aware of it and come if they want to come, and so, you know, your community may be making plans to attend the committee meeting, and so if it's possible to move the committee meeting forward after notice has been published, that's, in my professional opinion, the best way to do it. However, there's no, there's no structure within the document that you all voted upon that defines how long a person's term is on a committee, as a committee Chair, that's something that may want to be considered. There isn't structure on what to do in this situation, and, and, you know, this is something that you all can proactively make a decision about how to handle the cancellation of, of a committee. So your documents don't provide instruction for it, which is what prompted me to contact Dr. Young, to seek his, his response, and so if you'll give me a second, I'll look at what he said, and I might be able to, if you all have something else you want to discuss, I can read what he said.
What I was thinking while you're doing that, it would be nice to move that to policy, to provide some updates on committee structure and, and some cancellation things, Director Watry. The district hadn't had committee structures in, oh, Lord knows how long, I think they said, well, we had them at all. But I think in the best interest of the future of this district and improving processes, that we could, we should move some of that more detailed work over to policy to work through.
Madam President, the Pol- Policy Committee, while she's looking for the email, the Policy Committee will, will adhere to this and try to work with the Attorney to ensure that we develop policy that provides more structure to our committee meetings.
Thank you. And so, let me read to you the question that I posed Dr. Young, and then I'll read to you what his response was. As you know, the Hickman Mills Board has a few committees. The Board Members who are on the committee are appointed by the Board President. What should happen if committee members are out due to illness? Can the Board President appoint other Board Members to temporarily fill the committee position so that the meeting can move, move forward? What happens if the, the sick committee Chair would rather cancel the meeting, but the Board President wants the meeting to move forward, move forward with a committee meeting? So that was the question that I posed to him. And his response was, the eleventh edition of Robert's Rules of Order Newly Revised indicates that the appointing power also has the power of removal. So appointing someone temporarily to fill a committee chairmanship would be within the power of the President who appointed the committee Chairman in the future, hope this is helpful. So that was his response to the question that I asked. If I did not frame the question correctly, please tell me, and I can, I could gladly reach back out to him, he's quick to respond.
I think, I think he did, my concern was that the communication, it wasn't, whether or not they had the power, the committee, what, what happened to the Chair who's sent out a notice he's going to counsel? If the Chair, it seemed to me, as a common courtesy, whether it happened or not, that his Chair should say to, to me as the Chair, since you're gonna be out, I'm gonna end up appointing someone, then I can agree or disagree, but the Chair was not appointing, sorry. And that's not wrong, from the emails I saw, he didn't have, that's what.
You are wrong, Mr. Brooks. And so let me go ahead and correct it so that we can.
Let me just mention this if you would.
Mr. Brooks, you're wrong, because I've, I've explained it multiple times, I've reached out to, to Director Chair of the Education Committee multiple times, not knowing the outcome, not knowing the situation, not having a response. And I'm trying to keep it as private and respect people's privacy as much as I can, and so I really would like for us to, if we, we could discuss this amongst ourselves, I really want to per- respect people's privacy, because if we keep going, we're gonna, I, I'm afraid we're gonna be talking about people's private business. I'm afraid of that.
I, I will yield to your request, I don't know what that means, but I'll yield to your request. I don't think I need you to take it any further, but I'm just, I, I'd just like to know, and you, I think you've landed out, and, and, and Mr. Young has so stated it, and I think if we all understand that, then if it happens again, I think we know what, what process you put, I think, that, and I, I'm, I'm hearing that the, that President Briggs is saying she reached out to the Chair, didn't get a response, I think that's, that's, and the reason I said I did, because I saw the email that Mr. Abrams sent, and that's what caused me to, to say, well, he's the one that sent the email, I don't know what else went on, but he sent the email out about counseling, and was concerned that it had been changed since he canceled.
I would like to make a quick comment, all this is surrounding my committee, so my feelings and thoughts about, about this matter have been expressed to the Board via email, so I don't want to get into that. It is my hope that we, having this new understanding, having to go through the Policy Committee, that we sharpen up our communications, we adhere to what we say we're gonna do, we respect each other, we respect each other's privacy, and we can hopefully from this point move forward, but I do have feelings about this, but again, they were expressed to the Board, and I'll keep those communications between us.
And I understand, my question was not to Mr. Young, to Dr. Young, you heard my question, it was not whether or not a committee Chair could cancel a, a meeting, a committee Chair, I, I don't think that Dr. Young, and I certainly am not here to make the opinion that a committee Chair cannot cancel a meeting, a committee Chair can cancel a meeting. But the Board Chair also has the authority to be able to make temporary substitutions to committees if, if that need needs to go forward. So certainly, as a body, I read to you part of the document that you all voted upon, and when you established your committee structure, you absolutely have the authority to be able to amend that and make whatever changes work best for, for you all as Directors, in terms of handling committees. And I'm glad to provide any assistance that I can to help with that.
Thank you so much.
On that point, I'd just like to add with the advice and consent of the, of the Chair of that committee. In other words, if I, if I'm gonna counsel the, the Finance Committee meeting, and, and the Chair, and, and Chair Briggs says to me, well, I want to have a meeting, then that'd be the advice and consent of me saying, go right ahead with it, or whomever the Chair might be. And I think that's, that's, that's good protocol, I think it's good relationship to develop.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're moving on to Board Committee reports, Director Abrams, do you have anything?
Uh, yes. I had some notes and I lost them. With the Education Accountability Committee, we got again another update on our APR scores, so can we improve our scores? Absolutely we can. But when we ask questions, let's, I would just like to encourage us to ask questions that lead to change, and not questions that lead to blame. Teaching students is a terribly difficult task, and the Education Accountability, we embrace the questions, but again, I would like us to make sure that we're working towards change and not towards blame. And so I too commend the Superintendent and her team for the work that they're doing, and I look forward to positive growth for our students. I would also like to make sure that we control our narrative, a lot of comments of our kids can't read, and our kids aren't learning. We need to control the narrative of our district and our students, and I would like us to use a more positive language when referring to them, because our kids can read, and they are, they are learning. I have three kids in this district who are excelling, and so I personally support the district, yes, we can improve, and our teams are making efforts to improve, they're making efforts to target students through the RTI, through the targeted interventions, through new assessments. So again, we're working to get better, we're working to improve, but again, let's make sure we control our narrative and positively support our district.
Thank you. Facilities Committee.
Uh, I'm gonna let Mr. Wickley, you want to give update on everything for now, so they'll know what's going on?
We're having a great meeting, we talked about football field, we talked about similar bond processes that are going on, we talked about, uh, wrestling, we got those picks, uh, Alan's only had three or four items on the agenda.
Playground.
We're back from, um, high act about the high grass and football, we had a first, uh, team meeting with the bond twenty twenty today, so we're putting stuff out there for the Board to see.
Did you send those beautiful pictures of the Urban Playground?
Playground, the playground.
Okay, good, I, I know I saw them, I just wanted to make sure, thank you for getting all that done. Finance Committee, Director Brooks.
Thank you, Madam President, we did select the, um, the consultant for our health insurance program, and we look forward to in the future getting reports back as they scan the field and come back with suggestions to Finance Committee relative, whether or not we ought to, we ought to stay with, as, as we are, or go with a, a broker, and I think based on the timeframe, they fast tracking it, we should be able to have, bring them back before the Finance Committee, and Ms. Wolfsky, who's our expert at this, will be there with us to guide, along with the Superintendent, to guide us along, so that as we move, to make a determination whether we move in one direction or the other.
Thank you. Policy Committee, Director Watry.
We kind of covered what we covered in Policy Committee during this meeting, addressing EBBA dash A P one, and which has been brought to the Board for the first reading, and then we will kind of, the stage has kind of been set for our upcoming Policy Meeting to address committee structure, so that's about it.
Again, all right, thank the Board of Education and EOT team for your time and work. Moving on to informational items and future agenda items, February the fourth, twenty twenty, the Policy Committee will meet at five thirty. February the tenth, Education Accountability Meeting will meet at five o'clock. February the eleventh, that's the Finance Committee at five thirty. February thirteen, the Facilities Committee at five thirty. February the twentieth, regular Board Session Meeting at six thirty. And March the fifth, Bond Issue Community Forum, six to seven P M. At this time, the meeting is adjourned at eight thirty-four.